Good evening, I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. Glad the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishpie?
Here.
Laughlin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Morganstein?
Here.
Shortell?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here. Counselor Marone did advise me that he had a work obligation this evening. May I have a motion for item number three, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut Journal statute, section 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending workers' compensation claim of Andrew Thorpe versus the town of Wallingford.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you. I call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. And is there a motion on item 3B?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A.
We're not there yet. I need a motion on item 3B.
Chairman, I move we approve the settlement of the pending workers' compensation matter of Andrew Thorpe versus the town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion was unanimous.
Very good.
Onto item four.
Now I motion we approve or accept consent agenda items A through K.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item five, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item six, the public question and answer period. There being no hands in the audience, I close the public question and answer period. Onto item seven, which is an update from Youth and Social Services and the Coalition for a Better Wallingford regarding plans for Red Ribbon Week. If you would please come forward. And once you are comfortable at the table, please identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening, my name is Craig Turner, Director of Youth and Social Services for the town of Wallingford.
Ken Welch, the President of the Coalition.
Steve Switelli, Health Director for the Health Department.
Thank you, thank you for agreeing to see us tonight. I invited Steve to come up because he has been becoming a major partner of ours in some of our initiatives, and I think the information that he provides will help expand a little more your understanding of what's actually taking place from the health and safety and wellness for our children and families. So, thank you for having us. One thing that I want to comment on is your interest and support for the programming that we do in the community, particularly for the partnership of the Coalition and the support you give them, both through the budgetary process as well as the opportunity to be here to speak today. My role basically has been moved a little bit from actually kind of overseeing the direct service individually as an organization with some help from some of the other agencies in town, to a broader-based coordination of the efforts, not just for Red Ribbon Week, but things that happen out throughout the year that come up. The most recent one has been the issue of vaping, and some of the other topics concerning the health and wellness of the community. Having said that, I'm basically going to turn the rest of this time over to Ken and Steve to give you direct updates as to what they're doing, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask us. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. I just want to add to Craig's comments about the support that you folks have given us. It's, we wouldn't be here today without that support, and the town would not be as well off as they are without that support. So, I want everybody to understand how important it is in being here today. I'm going to spend a little time going over some of the things that we've done the past year, if that's okay, before I talk about Red Ribbon Week. Sure. There may be some things on here that people don't realize we're doing.
Hold up, Mike, you're like echoing. See if you move it backwards, if you want to go so much.
So, some of this stuff I'll just randomly throw out there. If you have any questions about it, just stop me. So, we did our second annual movie night. We had about over 200 people there. We did another Narcan training, that's the second one we've done. The first one was in conjunction with the Health Department. This one was done by the Regional RAC, which is the prevention, the state-funded prevention group that oversees our area. We worked with Celeste's Youth and Social Services, the Board of Ed, in getting the 2017 Risk Behavior Survey done in the high schools again. That's the third time in four years, so we've done it every other year now. And they're building a significant database on kids' behaviors, which is driving, I know it's driving all of the wellness programs in the high schools now, and it's a topic of discussion at almost every monthly meeting that we have. So, that data is key in what we're doing. Craig could speak to some of the nuances of how programs have changed, how attitudes have changed, how curriculum is changing, and what the adults in our community are having to update their skills and education on because of the data in that. So, it's having a broad effect on how we keep our kids safe and turn them into responsible adults. The Marino Bill, you're all familiar with the work we did on that. We would have liked to seen some more direct response to that work, but I can tell you that a lot of things happened behind the scenes as a result of the noise we made over that. A lot of people were afraid to take a stand, but they went to work changing the things that were wrong that that bill pointed out. And a lot of the work at the federal level has been reinstated, and they've gone after those diversion drugs. So, most recently, if you watch the news, there was a doctor in Florida who went to jail for 157 years. So... There's a couple of things we do on a weekly basis, providing services through Youth and Social Services for the town, the Hope and Support Group for parents who have an active addict that they're dealing with, and unfortunately, the bereavement group. Our numbers, our death numbers from overdose deaths are not going down, unfortunately. We're six years into having a death rate that's far above the state average. The good thing is that all the work that we've done with the youth seems to be paying off. When we first came to you six years ago, we were fighting an epidemic of 20-somethings that were dying. In the last four years, there's only been a handful, and I say only a handful, and respectfully, any is a problem, but we've made a dent in that. We've run up against somewhat of a challenge though recently. So, in the last three years, more than 40 overdose deaths in our town. All exclusively white males over 45. So, we're having lots of conversations about that. These are people that are very hard to find. They're kind of dug in with their lives. We're talking to people like the Renaissance Club and trying to get some inroads into finding them before they get to that point, but...
What's the Renaissance Club?
It's the old dry dock. It's now, monthly, they pay a monthly fee, and they have meetings. They have a board of directors. They just got a nice shot of new energy down there, and the place is getting active again, and I think in a responsible way. So, it's a niche they're going after, but this is the age group that they have down there. Again, you know, we're having all kinds of conversations about trying to find these people and create programs and conversations to help them, and right now, we don't have a strategy that's working, obviously. So... We now host NA, both NA and Naranon meetings at our office on a weekly basis. Obviously, if you went to celebrate, you saw that we were celebrating again with the best results that I think we've had in the six years we've been up there. We did a passport raffle. We had over 800 participants. Families that went around and visited other civic groups and then entered the raffle with those passports, and a lot of positive comments. Rayland's lemonade stand on the Greenwood Channel 3. We did a presentation with Craig and Sal Menzo to the Connecticut Phys Ed teachers. Project Grad, Beth Israel Golf Tournament, our second year in a row there. We went up to Talk Radio W DRC with Mayor Dickinson to talk about the Marino Bill. Been on community conversation on government TV, brought in Dr. Michael Sacks to give a presentation called Turn the Faucet Off. Dr. Sacks was the, ran the Middlesex ER for 25 years, well-respected doctor who is saying that there are a lot of docs responsible for the overflow of drugs that are flooding the medicine cabinets around. So, he's really going out of his comfort zone to do that. That led to some conversations about enhanced reinforcement of the PMP and getting these docs to use it more rigidly. We made, we had some concessions there, but we have more work to do at the state level on that issue. We're active on the Board for Youth. We have monthly support for YMCA teen activity programs, SCOW, and the Old Brick Boys and Girls Club. A participant in, it's not, I don't want to use the wrong term, Steve.
Yeah, the Health Improvement Plan for the town.
Yeah. So, what's the actual, what's that called now?
So, there's been a few different developments recently with the Health Improvement Plan, but what I'll say is this, on the macro level, we've always known the committee to be the Healthy Wallingford 2020 Committee. And with item agenda number eight tonight, the Wallingford Jubilee 2020 Committee, it's somewhat confusing as to what it is. From our standpoint, the 2020 resembled, or was based on Healthy People 2020, which will soon be Healthy People probably 2030. What we've agreed to amongst the group in meeting recently was to somewhat change the name and rebrand it, in evaluating how we do business moving forward to be more effective. What we're looking at right now for a name is the Wallingford Health Alliance, and that's something that we're looking to term moving forward as it is an alliance of government agencies, nonprofit agencies, and other agencies within town to help improve the health and quality of life for our residents, which I could touch on more after.
Yeah. It's important that we took a moment to go through that, because that's reflective of a lot of the cooperation that's happening in town right now. And an alliance isn't, in fact, what it is, what it should be. So, we did some festivals. We take our booth just about any place people will let us and pass that information. One of those was a Scarecrow Festival at the Zion Lutheran Church, and they made a very nice donation to the Coalition last year of over $5,000 that they generated from that event. We're very thankful for that. We do presentations at churches, youth sport organizations, businesses, and we've even been asked to go down and talk at Southern Connecticut State University on a regular basis to some of their groups. Red Ribbon Week events, which we'll talk about tonight in detail. We have an outreach in doctors' offices. People may not know that we are in doctors' offices. And hats off to Ernie Marsick, who's on our board and sitting behind me. He's here tonight. And most recently, Gina was part of that outreach. And we've got a new RN that'll be working with Ernie as we continue that outreach. What they do is they go into doctors' offices and distribute information and let them know that we care about what, how they're treating their patients. Sometimes it means talking about some issues that get a little uncomfortable because of our perspective. So, it's not an easy job that they're doing. We were at every Gardner's Market this year, and I mentioned that we went up to the State House and testified on behalf of the PMP enforcement, and we were glad to have Craig along with that. So, I'm going to talk about our Red Ribbon Week activities, and there's a heavy overlap in this vaping issue, because we've decided, because of the information that's been presented to the town at the levels that it has, and with the support of multi-organizations and agencies on this, that it should be front and center on Red Ribbon Week. Special acknowledgement to the Mayor's Council on Substance Abuse Prevention, obviously, Wallingford Youth and Social Services, the Police Department and Chief Wright, who would have been here if he wasn't committed elsewhere, you folks, the Health Department, Sal Menzo and the School District, and several other agencies. None of this would have happened, and you're going to hear this name if you're paying attention to what we're doing. You're going to hear this name over and over and over in the next six months especially. There's a Wallingford resident that serves as a research associate down at Yale. Her name is Trisha Dahl. It was her single effort to get this vaping issue brought to light that is causing all of the resources that we have to go towards this issue. The research done down at Yale, they were the only, and Craig can maybe speak to this more specifically, but it's important, we get incredible resources. She's the second person dedicated to research of adolescent, the adolescent brain and substance abuse issues that lives in our town. And it's, this is the only research being done on this issue. Her, the team, the research that her team did is what caused the FDA to change their tone and go after Juul and other manufacturers like them. And the data's bad. It involves younger and younger ages, as young as 11 and 12 years old now, and the numbers are skyrocketing. A lot of people don't realize how bad these Juul vaporizers are. One of the things that she brings to everybody's attention is an understanding of what's going on in these kids' brains and bodies as a result of this. I know Steve's going to touch on it also, but the whole idea that vaporizers are harm-reduction tools is thrown out the window. That may be the case for an adult, and what I mean by that is, these things were designed to help people quit smoking. You can control the amount of nicotine in these things and reduce it over time and stop smoking. Well, Juul has totally turned the tables on that. Juul is a manufacturer of a unit that looks like a thumb drive. It's small enough for kids to hide in their palm of their hand. They market flavors like bubble gum and cotton candy and Swedish fish, and they are behind a YouTube marketing plant that now has over 18,000 how-to-stealth vape videos. It's unbelievable. The sales of the Juul unit have gone up sixfold in a year. And it's just a matter of time for this stuff to start affecting them, for us to look at this in a longitudinal basis down the road and see how badly it's affecting these kids. Our concern is that it's creating an addictive brain, it's changing the brain chemistry, and not only are these units more powerful than the old ones, and just in terms of numbers, a first-generation vaporizer would give you up to about 18 milligrams of nicotine. Well, the Juul gives you 59. And in one pod, which costs about four bucks, it's the equivalent of a pack of cigarettes. Some kids are smoking two of those a day. Some of the anecdotal stuff that we hear about in the school bathrooms right now is, there's constant, filled with constant complaints. There's kids selling puffs on these things, and they're so inexpensive that everybody has them. So, the problem is going to get worse before it gets better. I got to say that for the people that were at the table in the mayor's office, there's 110% buy-in in our community for this. And we talked to a lot of coalitions, and this is unique. So, we're ahead of the curve here, and it's only because people are committed to doing the right thing in this case. And also, I think it has to do with the last six years of history. We've tackled some really difficult problems in this community, and we've made a difference. Everything from teen alcohol use and abuse to heroin use to drugs that were, you know, being, flowing into this town on the streets through a combination of concerted cooperation across the board. So, when this came up, the mobilization to attack this problem, there was already a cookie cutter example to use, and everybody knew what their role was going to be, and they sat down and accepted it. And we'll go over some of the things tonight. Again, Steve's going to touch on it a little more. I'm going to hit the high points. We're starting on Saturday, well, Trisha's already started. I think she's probably done four or five presentations at this point, and she's scheduled to do another one with us at the Senior Center on Monday, which is our first Red Ribbon Week event. I've gotten a commitment from some of the youth sport organizations to make it mandatory that their parents and kids show up. Sal has authorized the event to be a community service event for kids that want to show up with their parents, and we expect the building to be full. Trisha will be there, and we're looking to open the conversation, get this information out. Right now, the big challenge we face is that most adults don't know how bad it is. So, we've got adults around these kids saying, "Well, it's an annoyance, give it to me." And then, at the end of the day, they're handing them back and saying, you know, "Don't do that again." It's illegal for them to use these things. They should get arrested with a $50 fine, but because this thing has exploded in usage, the police chief has agreed to give us some time to educate people, and that's what we're doing. The first phase of this involves letting people know just how bad it is. So, we've got to share the science and the data. Saturday, we're sponsoring a vape buyback day, in which we're offering to buy these units back from anybody that wants to bring them to us. And we're doing that in collaboration with the Police Department at our office from 9:00 to 11:00 on the 13th, which is this coming Saturday. Posters and flyers, and a billboard program. And if you might indulge me a little bit, I want to show, because we're proud of our artwork. So, this is our first billboard. And, you know, you can see by the, I think there's nine different agencies and organizations that have joined together to make a difference here. This is the billboard that'll be up in two spots over town, one on the east side, one on the west side, and it's up in our office.
Audio's not picking you up, if you want that to be part of the record.
So, so this is, this is our billboard. That's going to be on the, most the east and west sides of town. It'll be the first quarter of our campaign. And again, it's, the purpose is to introduce what these things look like for some people that don't even know the kids have them. Manufacturers are making these things look like eyeliners, thumb drives, and again, the Juul, which is the real dangerous one, that one right there, is no bigger than the palm of your hand. It looks like a large thumb drive. And if you want to get a couple laughs, it really isn't funny, but I'll tell you what, I went on YouTube to look at some of these videos that these kids are making. It's feeding into the whole ego of a teenager trying to get away with something and winning every time. It's really insidious. Trisha Dahl visiting health classes, our community forum on the 15th at the Senior Center at 6:30. And we're developing a large information base on our website now. There's a whole vaping section there. If you want to learn about some of the, some of the background information, and I put an article in the package I left each of you that talks about the YouTube stuff. So, you can get that there. But on our website, there is a place for every department to put their position and their recommendations, and you can just click on that and get that. There's information for parents on how to talk to their kids. We have test kits. If you're concerned about, if your kids are doing this and you want to test them, they're free. You just have to call us. So, we're trying to develop a real, big hit, comprehensive program that will give every tool we can find available to the people of Wallingford, so we can, we can cut back on this. I'm going to give it to you, Steve, and let you talk about some of the details that you've put together. Steve, the Health Department is actually spearheading this and heading it up.
Good evening. So, there's quite a bit actually going on that we could probably touch on. So, I'll give more or less the macro view of what we're doing as a department. Again, we recently, in taking over as Health Director, we reevaluated our Healthy Wallingford 2020 Health Improvement Plan. We're modifying it somewhat to meet the needs of our community. In our Health Improvement Plan, we have a substance abuse section that we are actually going to focus on electronic smoking, and that is going to be a primary concern for the group, which will now be known as the Wallingford Health Alliance, not to be confused with the Jubilee Group associated with the, in 2020. In looking, doing some research, we found it interesting that in the town of Wallingford, when I solicited a list from the Consumer Protection Office Tobacco Program, we have 53 dealer licenses in the town of Wallingford, which is quite a bit. And it is illegal for individuals under the age of 18 to possess these devices. It's considered somewhat like a cigarette. So, they all fall under that same license in terms of a dealer. So, what we're trying to do is put together a comprehensive campaign through enforcement with the Wallingford Police Department and education on our end, Youth and Social Services, the Coalition, and many other groups within town that actually fall under our Health Improvement Plan. What I found interesting, and it may be difficult to see, is some of the advertisements that we're seeing from some of these companies. As Ken mentioned, initially, public health was somewhat in support of electronic smoking devices in that it was, it helps reduce the dangers that you would be associated with combustion-type tobacco smoking. And what we found was is that after that initial marketing campaign faded, they turned to children, the youth. And what we see here, flashy coloring, young individuals smoking with the electronic devices, and what I found very interesting here was hashtag #SmokingEvolved. So, now they're taking it to another level with their campaign as to how they're marketing it to the youth, aside from the flavors that were mentioned earlier, gummy bear, Swedish fish. These aren't flavors that are being marketed to older individuals that are coming down from tobacco smoking. These are for our middle schoolers, these are for our high schoolers, which was alarming to us, because for me personally, until Craig called me six to eight weeks ago- to us, because for me personally, until Craig called me six to eight weeks ago initially and kind of informed me that this was going on, I wasn't aware of to this degree. And seeing a lot of the electronic cigarette facilities opening up in town, which I'm sure many of you've seen, it is quite alarming. So again, to address that, what we're doing is, again, part of the Health Improvement Plan, we're looking at that in our substance abuse area. Again, part of Celebrate Wallingford, we, in coordination with the Coalition, we had the passport system where individuals would come to the Health Department, we would educate them on the dangers associated with electronic smoking, which was a big hit for us. I'm sure many of you saw the Kindness Rock Garden out in front, which went over very well with our community members, drew a lot of people in. It was a good event for us to reach out and meet with individuals in our community. I think that that'll be it for me at this point.
Okay, good.
Back and forth. But I think the primary focus for me, when I took over as a Health Director, was to evaluate the Health Improvement Plan and how to make it more efficient and to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck when we meet. And I think consolidating some of our resources and making sure that we focus on specific agenda items like electronic smoking makes us more effective than if we try and do too much at once. So that's something that we're trying to focus on moving forward.
Thanks, Tricia. Okay, so the rest of Red Ribbon Week looks like this. On Thursday night, the eighteenth, we have an open house at our office, and Celeste George is gonna be there presenting the 2017 Risk Behavior Survey. That's always a big event, and we have finger food and refreshments, and you're all invited to that. Hopefully, we'll see someone be there.
Thank you.
And then Monday is Community Night. And that's the kickoff, the actual kickoff during Red Ribbon Week. And on the Community Night, it's organizations from around the town, messages and interactions that they have on the substance abuse issue. And then we end on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, with the Walk of Hope, which is an opportunity to remember those that we have lost. There'll be luminaries up and down Center Street and a couple of keynote speakers that we're looking forward to see. This year, because of the vaping and some other issues that are going on, we have three, we normally would take the next couple of months pretty much off and let people enjoy the holidays, but we're not quite doing that this year because of some of the needs that we're seeing. And one of those is grandparents and the effect that the opioid epidemic has had on them. So we approached the Senior Center, we talked to Eileen, the social worker down there, and Ernie Marzick and her are gonna do a presentation for seniors about the problem and talk about resources and things that they might need that we haven't addressed. We're seeing more and more of this. Grandparents coming up to us with questions about how to deal with their fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old grandkids that don't have parents around or even alive anymore. So it's definitely a growing problem. It's not gonna get better right away. I shared the numbers with you. I mean, it's, this opioid epidemic is gonna be with us for quite a while. And if you have any questions for Ernie, he's here regarding that. It's at ten o'clock in the morning to cater to the seniors. I don't know how many of you can make that. We're looking to build a dossier of resources for them, because a lot of them aren't even talking about it. They're embarrassed, and they're kinda old-school about these kinds of issues. So they are carrying around an unreasonable burden in dealing with this problem. NBC has done some stuff on it, Public TV is starting to talk about it, but this is really nothing that anybody's putting any serious resources into. And it's gonna have an impact. It's not gonna be good. On the thirtieth, we're sponsoring our Second Annual Festival of Trees. Anybody that went to our office last year saw that that was a great event. We had eleven hundred visitors last year, and I think somebody in here might have won a tree.
No, that was my wife.
Hope you enjoyed it. And then in January, so Red Ribbon Week, what we used to do is we have a Champions for Youth event in which we get a bunch of nominations from youth-serving organizations for people that are presenting themselves in a way that is helping to produce good support systems for kids around them. And it was always a little cumbersome to do it in Red Ribbon Week, so we've moved it to January. It really should be its own week, and we never had enough time to really honor each of those nominations. We had as many as twenty-seven people nominated for that award, and all of them deserving of some recognition. We just don't have time, Red Ribbon Week, so that's gonna be its own event. At a dinner called Bring Back the Table, so we can kind of talk about spending time, having dinner together at the same time, and that's in January. And that's, thank you for the time. That's what I have to offer.
I do wanna thank you for, you know, I remember the first meeting that you came before the council, I think it was seven years ago, six, seven years ago. Identifying an issue and part of the problem that you sought to overcome beyond the underlying addiction issue is the silence in the community about it. And you've clearly taken that a hundred and eighty degrees in the other direction, and you've given a voice to the people who are afraid to talk about it. So I wanna thank you for that, for continuing to do the work. I do wanna acknowledge that this is Counselor Morganstein's item as well. And I'm gonna open it up to the council for questions, but I'm certainly gonna allow her to go first if she has any questions or comments.
Craig wants to say something.
If I may, just to give a perspective, for those of you who are reasonably new on the council, so what you heard was a very intentional effort, the results of which a very intentional effort to take what we were doing in one week and try to have it go throughout the year as much as we can, because this is not a one-week set of issues. And while we didn't have the capacity in the past to really address this comprehensively over a longer period of time, we're now getting to the point with the resources we have from both the town, and I am compelled to identify the Police Department and the Board of Education and the school system as taking a major role with the data that we were able to get through the student survey and make fundamental changes in how they're doing the work that they do on the basis of what we're learning about youth behavior. And I know that's happening in the community at the adult level too, but in terms of the youth issue, it really is a paradigm shift that we've seen in the last few years, and I think that that's worth noting. We only hope to be able to expand not only the scope of the work, there are some issues that we still want to address. The youth and adult depression-suicide issue is probably the next one for me to wanna look at a comprehensive response to that, because they are all tied together. The co-dependency and the coexistence of these issues, it's difficult not to want to pay attention to everything that's going on at some level. And it would, I can't overstate the value of the support of this group, the mayor, the Board of Education, and the community at large for going beyond the stigma and the silence. One thing that we know clinically speaking about getting people healthier, it's not what you tell us that makes you sicker, it's the secrets that you keep that keep you sick. And this is one example of a community trying to get healthy by just telling the truth and identifying the issues in real time to be able to help people with issues that are now out there for people to see and feel a little bit more normal in dealing with them, because they are, in terms of the number of people, very normal activities. They are not healthy activities by any means, but they're very normal for our times. So thank you.
Certainly. Counselor Morganstein, did you have anything?
Yeah, well, really, you guys say it all, you've done it all. Welcome to our new Health Director. We haven't met, we'll have to sit down sometime. I remember all the way back to the beginning, just sitting, you know, what's the name gonna be, what are we gonna focus on? And I think that you guys define a community working for the greater good and being flexible to the needs. Things come in different packages and really working at so many levels. I think it's also important to point out how you guys are working up at the state level as well with legislation and such. And I know myself, I hadn't known about these devices, kind of surprisingly, but this advertisement to kids is huge. You'd have to just drive down the highway and see the vodka bottles on the back of trucks. You know, it was my childhood when cigarette advertisement was not allowed to be toward children. So apparently, that legislation is written so specifically to industries, and now they're just turning it any way they can, because they need new smokers to make their money. So all the work you do is great. I wish that my schedule allowed to participate on the level I used to, but yeah, thank you, and we'll get to every event that we can. Thank you for your hard work.
Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a couple of specific questions that kind of focus down on the Juul devices, because, believe it or not, even, you know how closely I talk with you guys when I see you and Craig when I'm up at the Youth Social Services Bureau too? But I actually had, I had some information about this only because the e-cigarettes fall into technology, which is what I work in. But I also, because I have kids as well, I was having, I was reading something one night, and my oldest son was looking over my shoulder, and he thought it was new USB drives. And I had to explain to him what I was looking at. So to kind of go into this conversation and my question, how are we, as the Health Department or as your group can, how are we approaching, like, say, like, the convenience stores and these other places? Because it's not just Juul, although they're the predominant factor of the push angle that you discussed earlier. There's a lot of these knockoff devices that are coming straight in from China. They're gonna end up in these small little convenience stores that are not the traditional ones you think of on the corner, but the ones in the little malls, the dollar stores. And just for my own edification, I had my son, who's got an Amazon account, log in with his ID. I gave him Amazon dollars, so I wanted to see if he could make a purchase of this, and it went through. It shouldn't. He's not old enough, and they should have scoped that at Amazon's level, and they didn't. So I'm just curious what your angle is of approach on this?
So we've been visiting convenience stores. The Police Department has already gone to, I believe, every licensed vendor and explained to them the law. But for the ones that were willing to talk to me openly about the issue, is there's still a number of illegal sales going on. And the way it works is the license is so expensive that they're getting product either through a distributor or through somebody else who has a license. So I've called the State House to find out if there's any laws on the books that would prohibit that, and I haven't got an answer back, so I'm guessing there aren't. So that's an area where we need to work, and we've already talked to state legislators about pursuing that. The other thing that needs to happen is eighteen is too young. You gotta be twenty-one to smoke a cigarette, you should be twenty-one to use a vaporizer. So we'll be doing some work at the state level to change those laws. When it came to having conversations with the Ordinance Committee about pursuing some of those lines, they get a little more difficult, and you get into some gray areas, but those are things that we can do. I can tell you that having Chief Wright in this town is a godsend. The fact that he's already had a police officer in every one of these, every one of these retail establishments speaks volumes. And we're passing out small versions of that billboard to them. For the most part, they get it, and they don't want the problems. They wanna stay in business, and they're appropriately responsive to me when I go. One guy, when I told him we were having the buyback day, said he'd give me, he'd buy them from us once we get them in. I only share that because that's the mentality we deal with sometimes. So the best way to do this, I think Craig would agree, and Steve would agree, parents. We gotta get the message. They gotta understand how bad these things are, and they are very, we didn't get into the science. Come listen to Tricia talk about the chemicals that are going in these kids' bodies, at the levels they're going in and the potential harm that they're gonna serve. That's enough to, it's enough to scare you as much as heroin does. That's all I can say.
Well, I, just to follow up on that too, so like, I know you mentioned earlier that there's, I guess you're working with the Police Department initially on an awareness campaign rather than coming down hard on, you know, kinda like, hey, here's your warning, get it now. But these people that are unlicensed, they're already fully aware, we should like have no tolerance on them. Come right down on them like a ton of bricks, as far as that goes. With respect to what you just mentioned, as far as the ordinance, I don't think there's anything that stops us from jacking the number up to twenty-one, is there? I kinda put that back to, we do, we do a blue law on Sunday night here, we supersede what the state allows. Why couldn't we do that as an ordinance?
I would ask the Law Department, so...
Well, we could, I make the assumption, because I use Sunday nights as an example. We have the package stores in, not package, the restaurants in town can't sell alcohol after eleven o'clock, where the rest of the state, they can, and that's based on a local ordinance. Couldn't we create a local ordinance to make it twenty-one?
I believe there are state statutes that provide for local rules concerning alcohol. There's still several dry towns in Connecticut. I think that's an option that's been given to them by the state legislature. I think alcohol may be a different area, but I could research that.
I would like to ask you, if you could, because if there's nothing that stops us, there's no reason why we shouldn't lead.
From our perspective, it's, how effective is that gonna be with kids? I think very effective, because there's a message that adults need to give kids. And, you know, on this one, it needs to be hard and fast. This is very, very bad. You know, I didn't realize, I mean, I was just like everybody else. I'm thinking, well, cigarettes, vaporizers, you know, what's the big deal? We've been talking about taking this issue on, and it wasn't until we actually saw the data and the science that we knew that its emergency was needed.
Well, and again, just my conversations with you, I went and I looked up some of the things that you and I talked about. I can't believe what they can aftermarket put in these pods.
That pod, yeah, that's the other thing about the Juul. That pod is reusable. So once the nicotine is gone, they can fill it with anything they want.
And that's the key, and that's the key message. I mean, the initial message is enough, but that needs to be the add-on message. They could be putting illegal substances in there. If they're not the ones putting in the remanufactured stuff, they don't know what's going in it. So I'm all over this with you guys. Whatever you guys need, let us know.
And I think to your point, so the dealers are an issue that I believe law enforcement will handle, but I think the secondary sales amongst youth is another issue that we're seeing as well. Big brother giving it to little brother, or selling it to another student, or things of that nature. So I think that's where we come in, Youth and Social Services, the Coalition, to educate and saying that, you know, we use the term at Celebrate, there's no such thing as healthy smoking. If you don't, if you're not trying to come off of combustion tobacco smoking, this isn't something you wanna start with. So that's been another thing.
Well, I mean, and that's a very good point, and I mean, I'll take something out of my own youth, which is way more innocent of that, but it's driven by the same thing, which is the economics of it all. I used to go to Stop &amp; Shop and buy the ten-pack of gum, bust it open, because they were ten cents a piece, and I'd sell them in the school for twenty-five cents, because the teachers were helping me make money. They would confiscate the gum. I'd make money, and I could afford all the gum I wanted. But, and the only reason I bring that up is it's similar. When you're talking about something like this, where they're, if they're smoking, whether it's regular cigarettes, this, or something worse, they are, right up to the point where it's an illegal substance, they're doing it just to offset their own costs. So, I mean, it's just, it goes the whole gamut, so I'm glad you guys are on it.
So from, I would encourage you, if you have the chance to be there Monday on the fifteenth at six-thirty at the Senior Center, to come hear Tricia Dahl speak. But from the data that they've been researching, and clearly it's focused on Connecticut children, gas stations, convenience stores are the two places where most kids who shouldn't be buying are buying. So it's not so much the licensed retailers, they really don't wanna lose their license, and they have enough of a population that can legally purchase it, that they don't need to jeopardize their profit by selling to underage kids. Not unlike, you know, package stores or gas stations or where kids that were in sixth and seventh grade, when I was in sixth and seventh grade, went to the machine, put your thirty-five cents in, and you get cigarettes as long as nobody's looking. You're not trying to buy it from a place where you belong. You're not trying to buy it from a place where you belong. They're not going to let you be where you don't belong because you're not going to be there. You're going to go where someone doesn't see you or isn't paying attention. And that's true today as it ever was.
One of the things that we will be working on, obviously this isn't a school problem. This is a community problem. But there is an opportunity to educate the educators here that I think would go a long way towards helping control the use. Because that's a safe haven for these kids in the bathrooms. And Sal is aware of this and we're talking. And I think he's, they're going to do everything they can. It's just going to take some time to educate people first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to start by thanking all of you for all your work that you're putting into this. It's a monumental task. Just when you thought you were making inroads on the opioid, something else pops up. And this one is going to be a tough one. It's going to be as tough as the opioids. Because, and I like where you're going with this, is educating the parents. The kids we can get to. The parents can be a little more difficult. Because I can see parents out there that are vaping because they're trying to quit smoking. So to them, it's innocent. You know, it's no big deal. And, you know, they hear terms like bubble gum and gummy bears and all of that. And it's all sounds very innocent. Maybe not fully realizing, and Jason touched upon it a little bit when he was talking, what can happen. It's more than just vaping flavorful tobacco or nicotine derivatives. It's what they can do to these things. And I heard the other day from a customer that actually caught their child with one of these, with a refilled gizmo that goes inside. I don't know what it is. But it was a synthetic marijuana. And once that gets out, it's one thing when they're playing around vaping with nicotine. But now it's going to go into that secondary and it'll happen quick. And once that happens, because they're kids, it's, I just fear what's going to happen. Because it's going to be easier to get a hold of than maybe the opioids. And it's going to be more acceptable. And it's going to be hard for mom and dad to say, well, they're vaping, you know, they're vaping. It's kind of innocent. So I think by touching upon mom and dad or any of the adult that's responsible for these children, that it's not okay, that it is, you know, just because you're doing it to quit smoking, it's not okay if you see your son or daughter picking up a device to try to quit smoking. I could hear the children, kids now, gee, mom, gee, dad, you know, I'm sorry I smoked. I'm trying to quit like you. And mom and dad are going to go, well, yeah, I see, I see your point. Not realizing that maybe that's not happening, that it's being used for ultimate purposes. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of work. We, we have a lot of work. We as a community have a lot of work. This isn't all just on you guys. If it was only that easy. But it's not. It's not. It's on all of us. It's all ages, from grandparents down to brand-new moms and dads. That we all, we all own a piece of it. And it's our responsibility to help it go away. Thank you. Thank you again.
Just to clarify that anecdotally, so the school system has provided Tricia to the freshman, parents of freshmen, and she's done a presentation at Sheehan and she'll be doing one on the 18th, or the 18th at Lyman Hall. So I went to the one at Sheehan and I had a friend who happens to have a daughter who will be a freshman this year. And I turned to her and I asked her if she had any awareness of this issue before coming. And she said, well, I didn't know the significance of the problem, but my daughter last year in eighth grade went to several birthday parties and there wasn't one where I went to pick her up, where there weren't kids vaping from that party. So those are eighth graders. So let's not be confused and think that this is something going on with juniors and seniors in high school and the walls of the high school protect our younger children from this. Nothing could be further from the truth. And that's really the insidious nature of this product. Parents would be jumping out of their skin if that was a glass with alcohol in it or a cigarette. But they don't know enough at this point, they don't know enough to be as concerned or even scared as they should be about this product. And that's the education piece that we really need to get through. These are more dangerous than cigarettes by far. And that's the product as it's manufactured and sold. What goes into it is beyond description in terms of the risks, which lead up to and including death, depending on the substance that they substitute. So it's work for sure.
Counselor Fishbane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, thank you for your presentation tonight. It's been interesting, two weeks or so. You know, most people don't know, I used to smoke three packs of cigarettes a day. And I stopped from the Nicotrol inhaler, which didn't have a humidity component, but you know, it was just supposed to wean me off of cigarettes. And it worked. And up until about two weeks ago, I thought that these products were most used for that. And then I saw something in the newspaper and it was about the Coalition being against vaping. I was like, wow, what's the problem? So I went and went on the internet, you know, I found out what the problem is. And you know, Ken, you and I had a discussion over the weekend. I learned a little bit more. You know, I think part of the problem is that, is the acceptance. And it was years ago that I think federally, they weren't allowed to show smoking on TV. It wasn't as accepted. And because it seems like, I see it a lot, I see vaping a lot on TV. And therefore, you know, our children aspire to be what they see on TV, which just adds to it. So, you know, I share in the concern and I'm there for you. But Ken, you had mentioned in your presentation, test kits. And can you just, I don't know what, they're testing the level of nicotine. What's going on with test kits?
So the two that we have right now are K2 and alcohol. So the K2 test kit tests for a number of things. Nicotine would be one of them. And we're just offering it as a tool to parents that want to take an aggressive role with their kids. And that's what it's going to take. Nicotine is one of the most addictive substances. And when you're putting it into a 12-year-old body, it's going to be tough to change the course. So.
And how does this test kit, you know, what are they testing?
The, the K2 one, which would also be for nicotine, is saliva. And the alcohol is urine.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a small little kit. I should have brought one. It's a small little kit. You get a urine sample, you put it in there and it turns color. And if it turns the right color, then you know that they've consumed alcohol. If, same thing with the K2. Except that one, you can also, you're going to get an immediate response for some type of K2 substance. You could take the saliva and send it to a lab and get a further breakdown for some of the other things that that kit will test for.
So these kits are available to parents who suspect that their children may be utilizing these products.
Yes.
Obviously illegal.
Yep. Or providing them for free. All you do is ask.
So, you know, perhaps prudent, instead of getting a child involved with the criminal justice system to have this dealt with at home.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we think it's something that should be dealt with in the house. You know, we're not looking to jam up kids. And neither is the police chief, which is why the delay. He's giving us an opportunity to educate these parents so that they can step in and take control of the situation where they can. And we're trying to provide them with all the tools that we can find.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any other questions, comments from the Council? Counselor Letourneau?
Ken, I just want to clarify because maybe not everybody's aware, you said the K2 kit.
Yes.
That is the, for the synthetic marijuana.
Correct.
Which is, the street name is K2.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a number of others, Spice.
Right. But I think the most common is K2. Just, you know, when you talk about these things, I know you use that terminology all the time.
Sorry.
But it just, for the folks at home that don't know what it's going to test. Or, you know, and.
And K2 is especially problematic because it's sold as potpourri, it's sold as bath salts. It's still being sold legally over the counter until somebody complains to the police department. They take the sample, test it and say, okay, there's illegal stuff in here. What the company will then do is add cinnamon to it and put it back on the shelf. So parents really need to be vigilant when it comes to that.
And just on that note, as a side note, that how good our police department is, it was probably a couple of years now, they were able to shut down one of the largest K2 distributors in the state of Connecticut. And it was two doors away from a downtown, masked as a convenience store. So they did it, did it very effectively. And made a lot of people's lives miserable down there. So it was good. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public? Mr. Morgenstein?
Good evening, Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. This is to Craig and Ken and our new health advisor. We've, over the years, you've talked about doing the, at the Schools to Risk Survey. Are we going to be, over time, we've adjusted the questions as time has gone on. So are we addressing vaping yet? Or are we going to adjust that questionnaire so that we start gathering more data at that level too?
So I appreciate that question because we, so Celeste Georgia, we've referenced is the Epidemiolish at the State Department of Health. And she actually administers and oversees the crunching of the data for the State Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Was a former resident of Wallingford for a while, growing up. It's amazing how many of the people we run into working on this have ties to this community, either having grown up here or living here now. And it's been a real benefit to us. The short answer is we've not had a single question in the past on the vaping issue. And we will look to add some of the questions based on the CDC recommendations. That's how we determine the questions that go on the survey. They're all vetted by the CDC. To include, it probably is many questions that they may have that are appropriate for us. Similar to a series of questions that we actually asked on youth gambling, which was specific to our community because that concern was raised at one point. So if they have a subset of questions, we will look to add those. The downside is when we add questions, we have to remove questions because you're only allowed to have 99 or 100 questions on it. So whenever we add questions, we have to take some away. But we will definitely look to add questions where it's prudent for sure.
Yeah, I know that over the years, the risk survey has given us invaluable information in terms of driving our, how we respond to things and what we respond to. And since we're identifying this as an issue that really has come to the forefront, it just makes sense that, again, when we have knowledge, we have the ability to address things as you've done so many times in the past. And it's such a good tool. And I would encourage everybody, if they haven't gone to a risk survey by Celeste and presenting the information, it really does give you an idea of the scope of how many kids are vulnerable. And even, again, it's just really daunting, how many of our kids are at risk. And this is just another problem. If we could address it early, maybe we could keep that down as we're seeing these 40-year-olds spike at this point. The fact is, we're not seeing the 20-year-olds that we saw a few years ago. But the fact is, is that this is the sort of thing that could start them down that pathway. And as always, thank you guys again, as Gina echoed. I'm sorry that we haven't been available as much as we have in the past, but you know that we have your back.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for your dedication and work on this series of complex issues. And I'm sure you will see many, if not most of us during Red Rhythm Week.
Great, thanks. Appreciate it.
Up next is our update from the Wallingford Jubilee 2020 Committee. Good evening. If you could remind us who you are for the record?
Christine Mansfield, co-chair of the Jubilee Committee.
Bob Devaney, co-chair Jubilee Committee. Chairman Servoni and Mayor Dickinson, counselors, thank you very much for having us here this evening. Let's just say this, that the excitement is not just brewing, it is getting to be over the top. This has been four years in the planning and we're here again tonight to give you another Jubilee update and what's been happening in the last six months. On June 20th in 2020, we will have our big parade in this town, probably bigger than we've had in many, many years. On the 21st of June on Sunday will be our Religious Day with the opening of our play, the first night. 22nd is Monday will be History and Diversity Day, Night Two of our play. And Tuesday will be Women's Day with the closing night of our play.
And then June 24th, Wednesday, will be Business and Industry and Farming Day. Looking at Quinnipiac Chamber as the organizations that are leading that. We'll have a business tour at the Economic Development Commission as well. Thursday is Senior Day and Bargain Day. They will be two separate events, but coinciding on the same day with the Wallingford Senior Center's events. June 26th on Friday will be Youth Day, Block Dance and the Fireworks. Fireworks, we'll talk about in a few minutes under the sponsorship of Masonic Care. The rain date will be Sunday, the 28th. And then the 27th, the Gala Ball will be at Chode, another sponsor, no rain date.
Okay, our fireworks update. The committee is comprised of Parks and Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, EMS and Public Celebrations. Leadership proposed the following for Jubilee Fireworks. Date, 26 June 2020, Friday. Rain date will be Sunday with a rescheduling call made by 1:00 PM. No incremental cost is charged for a rain date. Our sponsor is a $20,000 committed sponsorship from Masonic Care. For the product show costs, we'll also host a community concert at Parking on the Grounds of Masonic Care. Location for the shoot will be Luffberry Park with a site inspection from our fire chief and fire marshal, an approval from police, fire, EMS, fire marshal's office, park and recreation and public celebration teams. The vendor is going to be under the Park and Recreation umbrella. The contract allows Jubilee contract terms. Show proposed specifications include 1- to 6-inch shelves and a 28-minute show. The committee brainstorm parking options around the area, including West Side, Dog Park, Community Lake Parking, and will meet with area businesses to explore more options.
And we'll host questions at the end, if that's okay?
Also on the fireworks night, Jubilee Committee will sponsor a block dance on Simpson Court, organized by Public Celebrations from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Center Street will be closed to Whittle Sea, having to allow the fireworks viewing. Next steps, we are going to do a test shoot in June 2019, one year from the shooting, for viewing and logistics review. We're going to look for parking areas to make the best areas for people to see. Marketing press and signage plans for parking, reviewable sites. The committee will schedule a public hearing and neighborhood notice to share more detailed plans and address questions. The Town of Wallingford Legal Department submitted and successfully secured a trademark protection for our Jubilee logo.
And we wanted to fill you in on the exciting news for the Wallingford store. We will be using the Park and Recreation's website capabilities. And we'll be having a Wallingford store with branded merchandise available. They'll also be hosting the store in the facilities under the direction of the Wallingford Center, Inc. They'll be organizing inventory, POS system, daily batch reports and analysis. All monies will be funneled through the existing processes, the Town Controller's Office, and then batch report and credit card transactions through their website facility. Again, this is directly through the account setup that has been facilitated since our day-one merchandise setup, 2016, with the Controller Jim Bowes and Town Finance Department and Legal. And the Park and Recreation site will also be available sometime beforehand. And ad hoc sales will be accepted at the hubcap, cash and check only.
The Moments Committee is a collaborative partnership with the Wallingford Historical Society, Wallingford Preservation. Wallingford Preservation Trust, the library, local historians, Tarn Grunucci, Mary Beth Applegate, Jerry Farrell, Bob Beaumont and others, finalized the list of the top three hundred and fifty moments in Wallingford's history with a Google Drive and spent a two-year project. The committee is scheduled to meet again with the Board of Education on a curriculum possibilities for local history per state mandates, local organizations for history, programming and quarterly cable TV show on WPAATV, featuring four to five moments discussed with local experts. History and Diversity Day will feature descendants, families and community leaders. A breakfast on that Monday with the bells ringing ceremony, opening of a time capsule, the time capsule, the inaugural history, the walking tour and a local history reenactment. Marketing, media, public relations, a full media report will be provided in the spring or upon request.
And just a reminder, we are a town committee. We have a website, wallingford350.org, where we have a meeting portal set up. You can access our presentations, our meetings and agendas. In addition to that site, also posted through the town clerk's office, program planning through both of their channels and through the good work of our government TV, thank you Scott, as well. And we'll entertain questions. Our public information session is October sixteenth. All are invited to be a part. We had terrific success continued through our website, our social media channels and at the Celebrate Wallingford Festival. Thank you to Liz Landau for an amazing location. And continued work with our organizations on event scheduling. We'll entertain questions?
Well, thank you for your work to date. Clearly, your committee is a force. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, I'm not gonna micromanage. I just, in the paragraph four in the middle, it says, "The committee is scheduled to meet again with Board of Education on curriculum possibilities for local history per state mandates." What does that mean?
Any curriculum changes, as you might respect, have to be funneled and adhere to the state Department of Education mandates. There is, we're working with the curriculum folks across every grade level from pre-K through high school to see where that fits in. Local history, one of the, is one of the five strands, of course, we can ascribe to, doesn't fit into every single year of education. So unfortunately or fortunately, we have to balance extracurricular needs that are outside of those mandates with the Board of Education's testing and curriculum activities and the priorities. So the state mandates are just the local history strand that we have to identify. So grades three to five and there's one junior and soph, is it sophomore?
Yeah, I thought it was grade three and grade eight.
Yeah, and there's one in high school as well. So we're working with Jim Francie, we're scheduled to meet then on October twenty-fifth. But we're trying to fit this curriculum opportunity in if we can through mandates.
Well, I'm in support of the, I'm just trying to fit, is it three and eight don't have local?
No, three and eight are part of the state mandates for local history. And it starts the third grade and then there's more local history that's given to the students when in eighth grade. We're just trying to make the awareness so everybody will be able to enjoy it, especially for our three hundred and fiftieth birthday.
Okay, I'm just, are we looking to change something? I mean, they currently teach local history. And I'm just trying to.
We're looking to add a chapter on the Town of Wallingford. So when you teach local history, they, the third graders will visit the Center Street Cemetery and they'll take a walking tour of that. We'd like to see and explore any ideation that could further explore other grades or other opportunities for that curriculum. So you might expect then we could produce something, you know, a piece of paper or a part of a text that could be read every year.
The three hundred and fifty moments.
Yeah, no, just so, just to understand, is it, the Board of Education is interpreting the term local history to be Connecticut history as opposed to Wallingford history? Is that the problem?
We would have to defer to the Board of Education. It's, we are meeting with them on October twenty-fifth and we'll have a better report. You know, we really can't speak for them. But what we're looking for as a committee, we're certainly looking to formalize the town's history from our three hundred and fifty moments a little bit more if we can. So we're at the discretion of their research of how to interpret that. And we're looking for their feedback on October twenty-fifth. So we'll be back to you with more information. But just to give you an idea of the partnership and the scope of where this Moments list is hoping to go, it's our hope that this historical work that has been undertaken by our committee and is stored on a drive, we're working within that Google Drive to explore. They've got the list and they're reviewing the opportunities. We're hopeful that we can see some opportunities. If not, then we'll be looking at perhaps a guest speaker, much like we do today. You know, Bob Beaumont's in the audience, I think, still. And Bob Devaney have made themselves available, Jerry Farrell, every year to give tours and to speak and such. So we're hoping to see if we can formalize that a little bit more.
Because that's, that's a portion of this that's really important to me. So, you know, Wallingford history, you know, I went to school here in Wallingford for a portion and I didn't learn anything about Wallingford history.
Moment, the opportunity is here now, Craig.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I, I wanna be, make sure that happens, you know, whatever I need to do, you know. So I look forward to hearing what's going on.
We look forward to your support. We'll be back to you, as we said. October twenty-fifth is our next meeting. We've been meeting for a good year with the team, brainstorming with Carol Latoury. They've been copying on all of our work and been meeting with us in the last year. We're now at the point with our handoffs, our committee overachieved on their deadlines. We handed that list to them six months ahead of schedule. They've been looking at it since the summer. We're looking forward to their feedback.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any other questions, comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, thank you very much for your update and presentation and we will see you in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much.
Onto the last item?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Section one dash two hundred and sixty D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale and/or leasing of property.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going to executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. There being no further business on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, we're adjourned.